Good morning. I want to call to order this work session of the Monroe County Board of Commissioners on January the 18th, 2023. Commissioner Thomas had to step away for a little bit to take care of some official paperwork. She'll join us as quickly as she can. So at this point, we'll go ahead and start our work session. And I believe that our new Sheriff Ruben Marte has things to share with us. Welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners. And thank you for allowing me the opportunity to meet with you this morning. And I feel good. I recognize a lot of the faces now, so I feel a little better. I can look at people and just put a name with a face now. So that's, I feel good about that. I really would like to give you an update. Before we start, I'd like to introduce the people that are with me right now. You all met Phil Ready previously. You all know Russell and Randy. The new person is the jail commander, which is Kyle, and his assistant, which is Matt. Kyle, you come up with a few more of the words here. One of the things that I really appreciate that I wanted is put to rest on the record right now is that we are truly, truly just trying to, and he's going to touch in a little more deeply, just clean the jail and desanitize it and make it a safer place for the people that are in there right now. That is it. I assure you, we have never talked about it, have no intention of trying to remodel the place. We know that a new jail is going to be built. Got it? Please put that to rest. Don't be concerned about that. That is not my intentions. We have enough to do right now just to clean the place, just to clean it, and enough to do just to make it safer for the people there and for the staff members as well. That's going to consume tremendous amount of our time. It really is. It really is. So please, don't, no worries. We're not, I mean, it's just not possible for us to do something like that. First of all, you won't allow it. So we're not going to do it. Okay? So we'll put that to rest. So let me introduce Kyle. Kyle will take it over from here. He's going to give you an update, so you know exactly what we're doing and where we plan to be.
Thank you.
Hello, everybody.
Welcome, Mr. Gibbons. My last name is often confused with yours, so it's nice to meet you.
Yes, yes. Common spelling, obviously. So what we would like to do, really, and we spoke to the council about this, and we want to make sure you guys had the opportunity to ask questions as well, if you had any, any at all. But really, what we're trying to do is, in the big picture, is reduce recidivism. And we believe we could do that through not only programs, but through taking care of the inmates from start to finish. And that means making sure they have a clean environment. And that makes, that means make sure they have some things that return them to society, some programs like that. We're really just trying to appeal to human nature, essentially, especially in this profession. It's, I think sometimes the perception is we get away from that. We want to drive towards it, and we want to be very public about it and transparent. So what we're really trying to do is dismantle the us versus them mentality that a lot of people think of when they, when they think of a correction facility. I think in some cases, when we come in, the conditions were so bad that it was hard to look at it without thinking of myself in that situation, or the sheriff, or whoever else, and think how I would respond to be in that situation. There were multiple instances in which I thought I would be, I would have to respond as an animal. I wouldn't be able to carry a normal conversation or with anyone else, let alone law enforcement figures that are making me feel like I'm anything less than I am. So in the last response committee, they said something that really struck us is jails don't disappear social problems, they disappear people. And that struck me specifically because I've been tasked by the sheriff to lead a department in his vision in trying to really take people, get them through the criminal process, and put them back into community and in an opportunity so that they can be successful. So what I wanted to do today is really let you have an inside look on what we have as a facility itself. Monroe County is the 12th largest county in the state. Bloomington is the 7th largest city. But of the 92 counties, only 30 counties have more inmates than we do. So we have a lot of people in this county, especially in the city, but we are doing a pretty good job through different programs like pretrial diversion and those services of making sure people come in and come out without keeping them in that environment and trying to put them in a position to be successful upon their release. So that's, I think that speaks volumes prior to our arrival. We just want to make sure that their time in the jail is something that they can build off them, rather than something that holds them back. You understand what I'm trying to say? So we have 294 beds. Our current inmate count is 191 total inmates. In the last 48 hours, we have 19 new bookings, but 18 releases. Now, that's not always the same people that came in that are just coming out, but that shows the people coming in and out at a pretty consistent basis and almost a daily capacity. So with that, a person comes in, they come out, that traffic alone, new clothing, old clothing, garbage, whatever else, there's a lot of things that happen daily that guards sometimes didn't have an opportunity to get to that, that cleanliness capacity in the past. So getting back to 164 felonies, or felons at the facility, 18 misdemeanors currently housed at the facility. So 18 people are awaiting pretrial services and whatever else. So we get these people in and get them out. They have low-level crimes. They don't need to be exposed to long stays in incarceration. So we're doing a pretty good, the judges are doing a really good job of that as well. We have four parole holds and one out-of-county hold. I'm going to go through a list of the most common charges in 2022. We have 472 holds for out-of-county and 453 failure to appear. So those are past charges that they didn't show up to court for. 335 violation of probation, 304 domestic battery, 297 resisting law enforcement. I'm not going to go through them all, but the good, the positive in this charges are public intoxication, disorderly conduct are pretty low. So of the people that are coming in, whether they're be homeless or what have you, there are less than used to be in the past. We have less instances. So I think that also speaks to the programs that we, we have here at the correctional facility. Upon our arrival, the entire facility was on 23/1 lockdown, which means 23 hours of the day they were locked down. They get an hour out to shower, whatever else, talk to their family, communicate with the courts. So they had it in tiers where essentially, and what I mean tiers is where there's two levels in the jail. Bottom tier would be out at a certain time, top tier would be at a certain time. But essentially, they only had five and a half hours out a day total between the tiers. So we're looking at about 18 and a half hours lockdown of the 24 of the entire facility. Sheriff came in, we walked through every single cell. And when I say everyone, I mean every single cell. And I think right away, his decision was we need to, we need to get these people out from this confined area in which we expect them to live, put them out in a day room and allow them to communicate with each other, to eat with each other, to really get back to that socialization that I think people need as a society. So what we did was we opened up the facility from 8:45 to 11:45, 8:45 a.m. to 11:45 p.m. for about 15 hours a day. And the only time they're on lockdown is 11:45 to that 5, 4:45, 5:00 a.m. time, which is allowing them to sleep. Lights, certain lights go out. It's supposed to be a downed facility. There's not a lot of movement by inmates. And the only time that they're locked down, other than the nighttime to sleep, is the formal headcount, in which we have to account for every single inmate, make sure in the proper area for obvious reasons, and food pass. Food pass, currently as it stands, everybody gets locked down and we serve trays through the bean hole, and they eat inside their housing area, their cells. We're going to change that as well. We have a lot of plans. It's just going to take some time to implement them because we have to get the staff advised and also the inmate population advised. And I have to be the intermediary between both to make sure they know, like, it's going to take the staff time to get acclimated. Staff, the inmates are going to have to get acclimated as well. It can't change overnight. So what we're trying to do is take the food, I mean, if we're in a cell together, we are this close eating every single day, and the toilet's here, and whatever else is in that cell, it's very, it's in close proximity. And it's hard for a person to be successful when that's how they have to navigate this process. So we're going to open it up. The day room has tables, and we're going to allow them to eat at a table. It should make tray pass faster, which means the facility gets off lockdown faster, if at all, depending on. So I mean, these are the things we're working on. Now, in terms of our altered mental status at the facility, we have 80 hours available full-time a week from mental health providers, which I have never been a part of a facility that's had that before. That is a tool that Assistant Commander Demings and I use daily. We are in close communication with them and how we can improve the facility. We're trying to open another block where we can house altered mental status inmates so that they can have a different paint scheme on the wall to kind of help them with their, just how they feel. Get them to disclose how they feel so that we can get ahead of placing these people on a psychiatric lockdown or something like that to protect them from themselves, and put them through programs to help them really go through that process. And I think we're on the right path. We're really close to being able to do that, and that's something that mental health wants badly. And we want to give them the tools to be successful. Commissary, in terms of inmates and how they are perceiving their stay here, we increased the amount of money they can spend on commissary. It was limited before, and that was so that, because of the short staffing, so that they can, the guards can get in and pass these things. And there wasn't an overabundance of things in one confined area. We increased that, but I also did not put a cap on hygiene. There used to be a cap on hygiene. There is not a cap on hygiene for obvious reasons. I mean, you have to have things available to you to clean yourself, to clothe yourself. And if they can afford that, then I don't understand why we would have a cap. We also increased the type of commissary they have access to, but also increased their tobacco products by one, where they're allowed to order multiple now. And I think overall, that's going to have an impact on the population. It's going to allow them to get back to how they were before they got here, to feed them more, to allow them their vices. I think that through increasing that, that's going to provide us money to be able to do some things. But as we know, it's probably, we'll see how it goes. List of services that we have at the facility, we have religion with Unchained Ministries, Shiloh Temple, and Gideon's. And then that's kind of predicated on, on what a specific inmate has, has a religion. He could, he or she could ask for a certain thing, and we'll, we'll try to find somebody to, to meet that standard for him. Adult education is GD and ServSafe. Monroe County Public Library comes in for library services in their vital program. Centerstone has a program called Helping Men Recover. Advanced Correctional Healthcare has programs in anger management, behavioral therapy, CBT for insomnia. New Leaf, New Life, New Leaf has a program called Read To Me. You guys, it's an excellent program. It's, and I've never seen it at a facility before. So it might be a Monroe County-specific type of thing, but they allow mother or father to get dressed in alternate clothing where they don't look like inmates, and record them reading a book to their children, which I think, that's incredible, actually, to be blunt about it. And we have a growth and self-agency program through New Life, New Leaf, which I just met with, with them. They're looking on increasing their involvement here because, as you know, COVID really halted a lot of things, and we're getting back into that. Some miscellaneous programs we have, Courage for a Change is a creative writing program. We have Alcohol Anonymous and Middle Way House. So that list alone, in comparison to the last facility I was at, is almost triple. I mean, we, and it's going to get, there's going to be more. He's, the sheriff's reaching out. We are reaching out. We're giving tours of the facility to see if these programs come in and see if we can even put them in a position to be successful. And we're creating space for those, for those programs as well. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you.
Actually, I guess not any questions right at this moment, but I'm extremely pleased to hear that you want to get away from the us against them kind of mentality, which I think really does not help anyone to improve their lives and attempt to become more, a more viable citizen. And certainly, cleanliness is something that should be available to people. I don't like the thought of hygiene products being limited. And I'm very pleased to hear what you're trying to do with the jail. I realize that at times, it may not be possible to do everything you'd like to, or at least not possible in this jail, but we should certainly keep all those things in mind for a new jail so that we really can provide a new environment for the people who are being kept there.
I would just like to point out that Commissioner Jones's mother actually helped start New Leaf, New Life, and that type, well, I'm sure the programming has evolved over the years, but it's been in place for decades.
That's great, actually. My chief deputy just reminded me of a story I wanted to tell you. We were doing a tour, and a young lady said, sir, and I didn't know she was talking to me, so I just kept walking. And she finally said it again, and I realized it's me she's talking to, so I stopped. And I think I might have told Commissioner Lee Jones the story, but, but I don't think I had. So, so I stopped, and she says, I just want to thank you. And I'm thinking, well, I appreciate that, but I don't like that you're back here right now. And I said, so she sees the puzzled look on my face, and she says, I just want to thank you for treating us like human beings. I'm thinking, well, again, I appreciate that, but I really hate that you're back here again. And she says, well, I'm an addict, and I'm a recovering addict, and I fell out, and I'm back again. She said, the one thing that made a big difference in the word is getting out is that just a mere fact of putting a mattress in the actual detox area, just a mattress. And as I thanked her again, about to walk away, she says, you don't, you don't understand that. Just, just a mere fact, that simple act made me feel like a human being. And that, that carried with me because giving someone the opportunity to get their self-worth back is a lot, the respect that you give them, and just to be humane. I mean, that's all we want to do with people when we have them in our care, try to give them what they need at that given time if we can. So when she said that, to me, that told us that we're in the right track. Because I had no clue who she was, and I didn't even think she was talking to me. But when we conversed, it was crystal clear to me, we're in the right track. One of the things that my chief deputy wants us to talk about.
And these are just little tiny tidbits that I think help us understand how we can impact with just a small, simple gesture. The story I was going to tell is, I try to make it into that jail at least once a day, if not twice, just to let not only the residents know we're there, but our workers too. It's reassuring to them that we, we care about their environment, we care what they're doing, we appreciate what they're doing. So this story, I try to go to the kitchen there, and we have inmate workers that work in that kitchen. And if you ever, if you ever get the opportunity to see that, they're in there, they bustle around, they're very proud. It gives them something to do. I've talked to them, they say it makes the days go faster, all of those things. So I'm up there talking to them. And as I get ready to leave, you know, I just, it struck me at the sense of pride that they had in what they were doing. So I just turned around very quickly and just said, hey, I appreciate you guys, and I appreciate what you do. And it was, it was like this, this, they all stopped, and they all turned to me and said, that's the first time anyone has ever told us that they appreciate us for, for just doing what we do here. And he goes, that makes us appreciate you. And that gets back to what Kyle was saying. If we can defeat this us versus them mentality, and let them know that just because I'm wearing this and they're wearing a jumpsuit doesn't separate us as human beings, it separates us for a short time of our station in life, but we are all, we all have the same aspirations, we all have the same hopes, we all have the same desires. And it's, it's interesting and rewarding to see those two things come together from people on completely different aisles of the spectrum at that particular moment in our lives. So just a real quick story that I thought you might find a little bit reassuring of how we can, how we can do simple things, very simple things, and we intend on doing those as much as we can. So I appreciate it.
So in the bulk of things, that's the majority of what we've been doing over there, is cleaning, trying to make that human contact, trying to uplift people, and make it a better condition while we have them in our care. And pretty much that is the crust of it. That, that takes the majority of our time. So thank you for your time. Really appreciate it. If you have any other questions of us.
I appreciate the report, certainly.
I actually have one more question. We have somewhat repeatedly heard about people being let out of the jail in the middle of the night, in the middle of the winter, with no shoes. Could you please address whether this will be the practice in the future?
From our, from our standpoint, that would not happen. I can't tell you if it happened in the past. I don't know. But under our watch, it would not happen. And in fact, we were discussing this, I think about two days ago, yesterday, in fact, that we plan to have an area.
Michael Lebrun. We have reached out to local agencies and see what we can find to even give to these people upon their departure, essentially. What we're also doing is looking into purchasing underwear, sports bras, those type of things, because people come in without it. And then, I mean, there's things that happen at the facility. They need to have those type of things. And then they will take that with them as they leave the facility as well. So we have, we have places in our facility that have extra shoes that we have. We have extra clothing, pants, shirts. There are times, like for instance, when an inmate leaves to Department of Corrections, sometimes they elect not to keep their stuff and allow us to do with it what we will, and we save that back. So I, I'd be very hard pressed to think of a situation where somebody would leave our facility like that. And that's something we've spoken about multiple times.
Thank you. I hope that'll be reassuring to a lot of people.
Any other questions?
Not right now, for me. Commissioner Thomas? No, but I appreciate everybody giving their time today, coming over. It's great to have these open lines of communication. It's important for what we do. And it's changed. We all know that. I'm sure there are things that you'll have to adjust to, we'll have to adjust to.
Absolutely. No, it, this is the spirit of teamwork, as far as we're concerned, and we just want to continue it. So yes, we'll definitely be back and update you again on the progress. And if we need some guidance, we'll ask. Absolutely.
And we approved your change to the Sallyport today, so.
I was told. So that, that'll be helpful with the van going in and going out. Yes, absolutely. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you.
Okay. Let's move on. I believe that Ms. Kelly is available. She was going to talk with us about Chapter 310, the Fee Code Revision.
Yes. Good afternoon. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. So just wanted to go over the purpose of this request. We did conduct this as a regularly scheduled Fee Code review. I do have some team members here with me today. Mr. Michael Kazemka, who is our environmental manager. We have Mrs. Cheyenne Cox, our senior wastewater sanitarian, and Mrs. Kathy Hertz, our registrar. So I thought that I would just kind of touch on some highlights and then direct any questions or concerns to my teammates. So starting with Appendix 3, our foods Fee Code proposal, we are recommending adding a reinspection fee for retail food establishments that require more than two pre-operational inspections prior to opening. The multiple marker, multiple farmers market license, we recommend offering this in addition to the single market option. This would allow vendors to participate in up to three markets with one license and fee. And this would give a small discount for each additional market. So one market would be $100, two markets, $175, and three markets, $250.
Can I, can I ask a question at this point?
Absolutely.
Okay. Do you mind? Oh, please. Okay. Since we're on this. So a couple of things. It feels to me like there should be some clarity about which types of vendors need to have a license. I assume that if you're only selling produce, you don't need one, or is that mistaken?
If you're a, hello, I'm Mike Kazemka. If you're a vendor and you apply for a permit at the Monroe County Health Department, you're inspected. But if you're a home-based vendor, you're sort of inspected, but we're making sure just you're, you have proper labeling on your products and that you, since the, I'm trying to think. The, last year, there's a code that was passed. It was the, I'm looking through my notes real quick, the IN 16-43 5.3. All home-based vendors must have a food handler's permit for food safety. And then we're checking to see if they have those permits as well, if they're at the market. But they have to preregister. If you're a home-based vendor, we ask that you send those applications to us ahead of time before you're at the markets.
Okay.
If that gives you any clarification.
Yeah. So everybody who sells at a market has to get a permit, no matter what you're selling?
A home-based vendor, you don't need a permit, but you do have to let the market manager know that you're, you have to have permission to be at the market. But the other vendors, the multipurposes, mostly these vendors are at the markets anyways, and this is to, it'll be less paperwork for us for the food division, and also, they're already at these markets anyway, and encourages them to be at more multiple markets. And it's a discounted fee for being at all the markets. It's less, it's less paperwork for us.
Let me give you.
And it's just like, it's.
Yeah. Let me give you an example. Maybe that would help you answer my question. If I'm only selling tomatoes, do I need to get a market permit? Do I need to get a permit from the health department to be at a farmer's market?
As long as that tomato's not diced or.
Right. I'm not touching them. They're just whole.
You don't need them.
So it's prepared foods. It's prepared foods, right?
Yes. And you have to go through the Monroe County Health Department.
Does that include something like honey?
Honey, they can fall into a couple different categories, but honey can be considered a home-based vendor product, so you might not need it for, you might not need a permit for that, if you're just solely doing honey. But if you're doing other items, like, if you're doing diced tomatoes or something like that, along with your honey, you're going to have to have a permit for your diced tomatoes. And then if you have honey on the side, I mean, that's just there.
So, okay, so let's say I sell a product that I'm actually doing something with it. I'm actually making a prepared food of some sort, and I need to get a permit. How often do you go to each market, or is it just a one-time inspection per year?
Each, each vendor is inspected twice throughout the market season. For like the Bloomington Market, if you're there throughout the season, you're going to be inspected twice. Usually at the beginning of the season, then towards the end. Usually, at the beginning of the season, our team goes out in waves. But I mean, if for some reason, inspector can't go out that day, they might go out on their own. But they're normally, they are inspected twice a year.
Okay. That makes sense. So I guess I'm, I'm a little concerned because it feels like this fee is pretty high. Because if you go out to the market, then you're going to inspect every vendor at one time. And so it just seems like our fee should not be more than. Um, and so it, it just seems like our fee should not be more than what, for example, Marion County charges. Um, and, um, you know, these are folks who really, um, you know, this, this is not a, a high-margin business, it's, it's not a high-profit business, if you want to look at it that way. This is, and, and food is important, so, and especially local food. So I, I would want to do everything possible to encourage, uh, folks to be selling produce locally that's grown locally, because it's so much better for our environment and so much better for our folks nutritionally, um, than prepackaged foods at the grocery store. So I don't know if there's any way to reduce this cost, especially with three markets being more expensive by, what, $70 than Marion County charges for the same thing?
Yeah, as of right now, at, some of these vendors, like I said, they're already at the multiple markets, so that if they would do it individually now, they'll be paying that $100 each. But if they do get that multi-market, they are at this time, if they, this goes through, they will be getting that discount. And then like, for the Whole Foods, like, for the home-based vendors, like, we're not asking a fee from them, we just ask that they get their food handler's, um, permit, and then also like, let the market manager know that they're gonna be present, they have permission at the market, so that, so Whole, those Whole Foods, like the corn, your tomatoes, and like, your honey, they can be there at the market. Like, they, they can, they can be present as long as they communicate that with the, the market manager. If that makes sense.
Okay, thank you.
So is the Bloomington Farmer's Market that's held on Saturday, if you sell there, if you also sell at the one that they run just a shorter time during the year on a Tuesday, is that considered two markets?
Where's that, um, a, a market, a permit's only good for one location, but, but I don't know where the, if they would, if that Tuesday market, if that's, if that's the one they list for their summer market, then they could be at that market as well.
They're two different locations.
They're two different locations, right.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd like to ask, um, many of the vendors, well, I'm curious if the permit is for a certain person, or if it's for a business, since many of the vendors split up between the two markets that are held at the same time, with one person being at one market and the other at the other market. Does the one permit still cover both of them?
Um, if they're, for some vendors are, they do have a business, but like, this is like, they want to be at the markets during the, the summer. So, I mean, that, that's separate, that's, they, they might have a retail food establishment license, but they're also gonna have this permit license for the summer markets.
So if I remember correctly, also, um, we were told that in Marion County, it's a hundred and eighty-three, a hundred and eighty-five dollars that covers three markets. Is that, is my memory correct here?
One eighty-seven.
One eighty-seven fifty.
One eighty-seven, one eighty-seven for the three markets. So, why are we charging so much more?
I mean, at the time, if you want to be at three different markets, it's gonna be, at this time, it's gonna be $300 per location. So, for the time we put in for filing, permitting, and licensing, that's what we, as the group, the committee, came up on.
So if I understand you correctly, you're saying that that's what covers the cost of this?
Yes, 'cause like, if, I'm, if I'm a vendor at three different markets, it's gonna be $300. But if I do this multi, multi-permit for those, for the seasonals, it's only gonna be a hundred, $275, or sorry, $250.
So, so.
Instead of the 300.
Okay, but I still don't understand why it would cost $250 for a multi-market permit here, if it were three markets, and in Marion County, it costs 187.
I mean, I need some more information on that, but this is like, just to balance out, just to bring in, keep almost a similar revenue, but to also give the vendors also a discount at the same time. So it'd be like a small loss of revenue, but also giving the vendors a discount.
Okay, I still don't feel like my question was answered, but.
Uh, if, if I may, just, um, I am wondering to help provide some clarity with this, um, to be able to do a cost-benefit analysis here at the department, if we were to actually factor in proposed costs for, um, salary, for time that it is taking to staff, mileage, um, and then the cost that we are actually using with supplies, and to be able to provide those figures, is that something, um, that would help, or that would be able to help explain some of these costs? That's just kind of my thoughts on this.
Yeah, I, I'd like to point out that the city of Bloomington actually highly subsidizes the two markets that they run. I would think that the county might be able to afford to be a little bit more helpful in this matter.
Consistent with the city's fees?
Uh, it, it would, it would not, there, there would be no equivalency there. The city doesn't do food permits, but I'm just pointing out that the city is not trying to recoup all of their expenses for the market. Um, and I'm not sure that we need to recoup 100% of our expenses for the permits for the market.
Yeah, I, I think it would be good to see the costs, and then, uh, perhaps we can have a conversation with council as well, to see if they're willing to, um, cover the costs, right? I mean, that might be a conversation that would be helpful, um, if, you know, if they're, or if they're expecting this program to pay for itself with permitting fees, right? So that might be a good way to go about this. So yeah, some costs would be good to see.
And I would like to point out that while I am a farmer's market vendor, I do not do any prepared products. I don't, I've never been required to have a permit, so this is not actually something that's affecting me personally.
Thank you. I think that's important to point out. There's no conflict of interest here.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yes, so if you could give us some of those numbers, that would be appreciated.
Yes. Uh, any questions about, any more questions about that, or the reinspection fee under the foods?
Not for me. No. The rest of the fees all make sense to me, it's just that one that I had a question about.
Great. Um, I will move on to Appendix 4 then. Uh, we are proposing to completely remove the real estate septic inspections. And, um, I have Ms. Cox here that can speak a little bit further on this topic.
Yes, so, uh, the real estate septic inspection program is a optional program that people buying real estate in Monroe County can currently, uh, request. Um, right now, it takes about three to five, uh, hours for one of our inspectors to complete. Um, and right this moment, I am the only full-time wastewater inspector for the county. Um, we do plan on hiring a new person, but that's still only two people, um, for the entire, two full-time staff for the entire wastewater, uh, section. Um, it's not required to have a real estate septic inspection under State of Indiana code, and none of the, uh, surrounding counties do it. I also have a letter from the, um, from Mr. Mike Mettler, who is the director of the Environmental Public Health Division, um, uh, for the residential onsite sewage system program for the state, referencing, let's see, if you'd like me to read it, I can. But basically, it just references, um, some possible drawbacks with the real estate septic inspection program offered by the county currently.
Right, and if, if I understand that correctly, one of the issues was whether or not any liability would attach, and we were trying to get that information from, um, one of our legal department gurus.
Yeah, I hope Mr. Baker could provide us with that information about whether we do have a legal liability if we're performing these, uh, inspections. And I think, um, something that was alluded to in the letter that I found interesting is that, um, it's possible for us to, and this is something we can, we can discuss, um, more fully later, but that it's a possibility that we could, uh, require a septic inspection. I mean, a 20% fail rate on the ones that were inspected seems pretty significant. And given the topography of our county, and given the concerns that we have regarding Lake Monroe, Griffey, Lemon, um, this is an important topic for us, uh, in terms of, uh, stormwater, and in terms of pollutants in our water supply, in our creeks, and in our, in our lakes' reservoirs. So, uh, if it's, one of the things that we could talk about would be requiring this inspection, um, as part of a real estate transaction, but allowing, um, or, you know, we could even potentially just have this be something that a private firm does that we don't do. So that takes the, the health department out of it for that aspect of it, which, which seems to be a concern. And I can agree that the, the cost is high, um, but I think the cost of not doing it is higher for our community. So, um, I think we have other options to talk through, and, um, but I do want to say that I thoroughly understand that in a cost-benefit analysis directly about this particular service at that given moment, that it is expensive for the county to do this program, we do not recoup our costs. I think, long-term, it can be more expensive for us not to do this, or not to require this, and let private firms do this, where they are accepting, obviously, that legal liability themselves. So, a couple of questions for Mr. Baker, if, if Mr. Cockrell could pass them on, I think we have some, uh, conversations that we could have about this. That, that's just my concern. Um, it, it certainly, uh, I do appreciate the work that's been done so far, and I know it is a lot of work, and it takes a lot of time. But, um, I just feel that with the fail rate that we've already seen, that this may be something that we need to, uh, fold into the cost of real estate transactions for folks. I don't want to make housing less affordable, but I certainly don't want to make Monroe County a terrible place to live.
Commissioner Jones, do you have comments?
No, not at this time, thank you.
I was struck by one of the, some of what came in, a letter from the Department of Health, that, um, it seemed to me that the gentleman was saying that this was important to do at some level for public health. There was the issue of the liability raised, but until we get that answered, um, I would like to, to hold off on this particular item, um, which would mean that I would, I'm more than happy to go ahead on the restaurant fees, the fees for the home birth certificates, and changing, uh, what somebody gets with a, a birth certificate, eliminating that small one. Um, I don't, were there, am I forgetting anything?
Well, but the farmer's market fees are there.
Well, we need to.
And we need to.
But that, could that, we need to, yes, take care of the farmer's market fees until, I was wondering if those could be done in two stages.
Ah.
So that we could go ahead and, and move forward on these other things.
I'm sorry, if I may bring up one last point about the real estate inspections in the meantime, though.
Sure.
Um, I, I understand that, like, the, the cost and the liability are something to bring up, but also just the amount of time that the wastewater section staff has to put into these, uh, inspections currently, means that there's the possibility of us having to sacrifice other inspections that are necessary to the code, while this real estate inspection is not necessary to the code. So currently, this is a great service, and if I have the time and the staff to complete it, I would be more than happy to offer it. But currently, I do not have the time and staff to continue offering this service reliably, um, for the community.
To me, that's part of the cost, is time. Time is a cost. So that's what I was talking about when I mentioned cost-benefit analysis. It was the amount of time that it takes to perform the function, um, and, uh, versus the, the permit fee.
So is it possible to do this, the code change, in two stages?
Well, of course it's possible to do it in two stages. I, I guess one thing that I've, I kind of want to make sure everybody's, if the, if the health department currently, as its staff, cannot do the statutorily required inspections and these, uh, requested inspections, I guess, the, the, I guess, should we put some language in here that says in the event, the, the statutory ones would have priority? Or is that, I mean, I, I think that's kind of a concept that we, that would need to be thought about when we, when we talk about these things. Because if they don't have the ability to do both with their current levels of staffing, clearly they've got to make a choice.
Well, I, to me, it's council needs to make a choice, not us. And certainly, you know, if they knew what was at stake, they might feel differently about it. But, um, this isn't the one we're talking about splitting. You're talking about splitting the code regarding fee payments.
And you could split that, no problem.
Okay.
Just whatever you don't change this time will remain as it currently is, and then...
But this is lower than it was before.
Yeah, it is.
So we could pass this now, but then go back and revise this cost, but we need to act quickly before the market.
Right.
If we're gonna do that. Does that make sense?
Right.
Yes, and I believe that, um, early March is when it would be helpful to have this information.
Should, should I, um, plan on coming back at the next work session with more of that information, or, um, in regards to the market fees?
Um, for me, it seems like you could just send that on email, just that, you know, how much it costs to, to do an inspection, and, yeah, I would, email's fine. Um, I'm, I'm better reading than I am listening, anyway.
It would allow us to move forward more quickly.
Yeah, it would be helpful.
Yes.
So we could put the fees back on next week's regular agenda?
Yes.
Is that what we're considering?
That's, that's what I'm hearing.
Okay.
And, um, we'll work with, uh, Mr. Cockrell on some language about the real estate Because we do understand the, the staffing shortage and the other things that are going into this, we're not unsympathetic to that.
Okay.
Okay, are we good?
Felisa?
Okay, I appreciate you coming and talking with us this way. Thank you very much, to you and your staff.
All right, great, thank you.
Thanks. Um, I keep seeing Kelly Whitmer here, is there something you wanted to bring, Ma, Ms. Molly?
Um, I'm going to present to you today an addendum to our purchase agreement for two Ferris mowers that was previously approved, um, on November 21st for the Parks Department. And the addendum adds a trade-in value cost for two mowers that the Parks Department currently has. Um, on November 30th, you passed a resolution sur, or, yes, surplus, surplusing those mowers. And originally, the plan was to sell those mowers on public auction. However, that did not, um, pan out as we would have hoped. So, we have, um, spoke with Richard Small Engine, who's willing to trade in, give us a trade-in value for those mowers. So I have an addendum signed by, um, the representative from... So I have an addendum signed by the representative from Richard Small Engines that I will ask the commissioners to sign to reflect that we will be trading in those mowers for a cost of $9,500.
I move that we approve the addendum to the agreement from November for Richard Small Engines regarding the Ferris mowers, and the trade-in value of $9,500 will be reflected on that addendum.
Second.
Seems very straightforward. It's a good thing that we are saving some money on the... For the county with this, so I appreciate this. I appreciate you bringing it forward. Is there any public discussion on this? Oh, we don't need to take that in work session or not? Yeah, we can have public discussion if there is any. Hearing none, I call for a vote on the addendum to the November agreement on the two Ferris mowers with Richard Small Mower... Richard Small Motors?
Engines.
Engines. Thank you. I got to get all this right. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion passes three to zero. Thank you for bringing this forward.
Thank you.
And then I think we have one other item.
Yes. Commissioners, you should have received a draft version of this via email. There was a request to amend the CJRC, which is in the ordinances, the Monroe County Community Justice Response Committee. And it is primarily to change the membership, adding all three commissioners, including the president being of that committee, being a commissioner, the vice president being one of the three council appointments, having two judges' appointments, with the presiding judge being one of those, adding the probation department to the list, and removing the health department. One thing that was unclear from that was whether you wanted to continue to have the jail commander as a member of that committee. It wasn't in that list of who was to be on it, and it wasn't in the, "Hey, we're removing these." I have either... And the other one is, we've talked about, or I believe, the "R" in CJRC has been seen as either response or reform. It's currently response, but if that was a change you guys wanted to make, I went ahead and put it in there, but I can change that if you wish.
I'd like to hear input, especially about the... Was it the jail commander? Yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah. I think we definitely need the jail commander as a part of the committee, and the name doesn't make a lot of difference to me.
I agree on the jail commander, and so that would make it 13 members?
I believe so, yes.
And I... Okay. And, yeah, that was the only other... That was it. That was the only question I had. I'm good with response, because we are responding to the reports and planning for reform. It could be either.
And the omission of the jail commander was mine. I take full credit for... Full responsibility for that. But yes, I'm more than happy to have the jail commander on there. I think that's an important person to be involved with what we're doing. So that would take it up to 13. And is there any comment on this? If not, I call for a vote for the amendment to... I can't get back up on this. Call for a vote on ordinance 2023... Dash 3.
We will get it. Make sure the number is correct. I did not get a number for that ordinance.
Okay. That's probably not the right number.
Okay. So you'll bring it back for ratification next week?
Yes. We'll bring this back for ratification next week.
Okay. So I call for a vote on changes to the ordinance for the... Creating the Monroe County Community Justice Response Committee. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three to zero. And is there anyone else that has something for our work session? If not, thank you all for being here, and we will see you next week. Yes, we are adjourned.